Lord, pray seven, Father, we just thank you for giving us the privilege to behave in certain areas. We hope we do the things and decisions that are pleasing to your eyes and for the benefit of the town. Pray that you just watch over everybody in Maryville and not on big posters and pray all these things that you stand there.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Is there any add-ons to this amendment? If not, please, I have one and we'll put that as number four. For a resolution to be sent to the public jury to clean out a ditch on the west side of the Methodist Church on Preacher Street.
The Methodist church?
Methodist.
So what ditch is that?
One mile past Gettysburg.
Oh, okay. When you said Preacher, that's right.
Well, yeah, but on Preacher message, on Preacher, with the west side of the church.
Yeah, okay, yeah, indeed, it, I think it gets over into, I keep it mowed all the time, but still it's a big, short, pretty, pretty.
Well, there's the cover to the town cleaned out, so the rain ditch, two covers stocked up.
Yeah, that's right.
And so the rest of it, I know, and I asked him to put it on the agenda, because they have to get it from them. They got, they got heard from, and if she did, he'd done right, it proved it.
I think it would, it had a great gas, man, so it was under home lights, that's, that's how it paid.
I have a motion on this now?
I have one.
Second, all in favor?
I, has it cleaned up, or not yet?
Yes, ma'am.
I don't know, sure, Jack, maybe they get a vote or whatever.
The town already cleaned it up.
Oh, okay.
Okay. I have a motion for the approval of the minutes that's presented for regular meeting of August 10th, 2015, I have a motion.
I make my.
Second.
That's third.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, there you go. Approval of the financial statement that's presented for August 2015, I have a motion.
Motion.
I make the motion.
I have a motion, Matt Allen, I guess, second, Ms. Jackie. All in favor? Under our mayor's comments, the high school football day, we play at Pickford, Picky, this Friday night here at home. And the fair will be starting off at six, go over to our parish in Drutter, people, six through the 10.
Eight o'clock.
Our dog catcher last day will be September 30. So we'll put out a notification in our local paper for advertising our dog catcher. Movie night is, for this month, is September 19th, that the Jack Taker will be at, out of this, as the name of the movie.
Maleficent, Maleficent, Maleficent.
Okay, that's seven, seven thirty.
Seven thirty.
Seven thirty.
Seven thirty, okay. Okay. Will it be on under old business, Mr. Carl Samuel, a family alleyway located on Henry Street? I'm going to turn this over to Mr. Wilbur, as I'm in the department.
All right, well, basically, under the laws that you, Louisiana 48701, the parish, parish or governing authorities and municipal corporations of the state, except parish board, leaves their vote, or set aside the dedication of all road streets and alleyways laid out and dedicated to public use within their respective limits. When the road streets and alleyways have been abandoned or no longer needed for public purposes, upon such an occasion, all the soil covered, fire embraced by the road streets or alleyways up to the center line thereof shall revert to the present owner of each side. There's a certain, in 48703, lays out the times that suit to establish title or interest after notice of abandonment and prescription thereof, and that any person other than the person to whom the abandoned property is exchanged, having or claiming to have any rights, title, or interest in or any property abandoned and exchanged by parish or governing authority per sentence to provisions of 48702, shall file suit to establish the right claimed within six months of the date of publication or the public notice of abandonment, or lose by prescription all such rights, title, and interest in or to the property. So I think the burden at this time would be to have a suit to come against us. If we were to take something that we've already abandoned away from where the property owners could wind up to the certain middle line, I think that would be reaching out and trying to do something that we're not empowered to do under the laws of Louisiana. Rather than to go out and say whether or not this was correctly done, it's been in effect for several years now, and the six-month period has passed, so that's where we are. If someone wanted to bring suit and to try to establish something contrary, they could, but the burden of proof would be on them and it's not on us to show this abandonment was true and correct and the notice sent out, so that's kind of where we are. The burden's not on us to say that how we acted was in every way correct. Someone would have to bring suit to show and try to establish something otherwise, so I think that's where we are at this time. And we're talking about it a lot, but it does have access, we're not cutting off access completely, talking about the alleyway, however, on the, is it the south side, that there is the actual road access? So that's, that's kind of where I am, there's no exact, there's.
I'm reading a road, just, that's actually a little way up there.
Well, there, in the original plan, there appears to be, the road would end into the property. It would go straight, the access that would appear to be the primary, being that road or the street would run into the property.
Would they give it a name?
And not, not talking about the alley, but talking about the.
And that's what I'm talking about, the south.
Is that?
Off the south street.
Fifth street.
Is that the fifth street?
Really?
Fifth street, right. So that's.
Was it ever given a name?
Oh, well, they don't have it in there.
Talking about the alley.
That alley, the way our address goes all the way through.
Right, indeed, all the way through to Fifth Street.
Right. And that's still abandoned.
It would be the property located in between blocks.
I don't know that moving.
It's not a named street, it's just the blocks that would be in between the two areas, being the alleyway of the certain subdivision or platte that was built in.
What I'm trying to get to here is that Mr. Samuel comes in one day, I think he, this is what, he can take it up and run the court, between him and Mr. Preacher, and let the court decide, the town was out of it, let the court decide what's going to be the best way for him.
Right, more of the civil action, this one.
Right, but this was abandoned, it wasn't discarded, and that was set over to your office.
I do not have the court information, but I have a copy of the documents.
Right, right, right. And, and I already know that that alleyway goes down off the Henry Street over to South Street.
Correct.
So another way to resolve this, between Mr. Preacher and Mr. Samuel, is going to have to, seven, two parties from Mr. Samuel's side, that's about to go to court.
That's right.
Okay, I, I understand, I will slip this to the head of the court.
That's it.
I thank you for that as much.
Sir.
Okay. There's a motion on this.
The city don't have to be involved in how to call anymore.
No.
You can have something, something.
Before we blow this thing, you got to blow it, it's mighty, boy, where is, where is Henry Street, okay, I'm not familiar with it.
It crosses 389. If you cross the railroad track and go off 190, 389, I think it's the second street to your right.
He run a bit of the road.
In the morning, never came to live near a dog house.
Yeah, or 190, then it's all there.
Yeah, it's the first, it's the first, yeah, the first street, first right and left.
Left and right, correct?
Yes, sir.
If you're coming from 190, it'd be on the right.
And left.
Well, the street would be on that, but the house is on the right.
Yes.
Yes, ma'am.
It's west of 1389.
Runs all the way across. Going past my house, the railroad tracks, and then there could be on it. It's hard to see, though, isn't it? Or is it just there?
What's hard to see? What's hard to see?
Where that Sammy, a man, is at.
No.
Can see it good?
You drive around, people see it.
I drove around in there. But I guess the first time I didn't see it, because I really wasn't looking for it.
There's nothing to vote on.
That, just from the street sign.
I have a clear understanding, because I know he gonna come in later later, and what I tell him, I'm gonna be the right one to tell him.
There's nothing that we can do.
There's nothing we can do with it.
Right, when some kind of actions fall and we're given notice that he's challenging.
Mr. Preacher.
Or the procedures that we used at the time were defective and that there was, it was not coming properly into our directory.
But we don't need a motion on this, okay. Okay, moving right on now, under new business, the part only have under is, I'm going to turn this over to Chief Thompson. Police personnel, Mr. Keith Weaver, full-time, trouble with Maryville police, sorry. Chief.
As of the time Officer Rick resigned on us, I put Mr. Weaver in as, might as well say part-time, full-time, because we've been working full-time, overtime, and we need to move him all the way with full-time, that way he'll be getting paid for what he's doing.
I was gonna say, are you getting paid for this?
Well, yeah, but he's not making what he should be making.
Yeah, Mr. Weaver, it's back over there.
He was the one who's taking care of the center of citizens.
I was quitting, I was gonna move him up to full-time.
I'm seeing him probably with it.
Good night, I love you.
And that was how to talk.
He's already working full-time, just give him a nap.
I really like to go back to full-time.
I make a motion, please, sir.
You actually made a motion?
And, me for second.
Okay, me for second, I'll replace, I have another motion.
It's already passed.
All right, now, a motion, okay.
There you go.
All right, under number two, a naming budget for fiscal year July 1st, 2014 through June 30th, 2015.
The motion accepted, yes.
We won't mention the budget generally.
Budget, fourteen fifty. Yeah, I think.
Sure.
Have you booked this?
Yeah. Yes, I have. Would you like me to tell more rules of money?
I don't know, are you living money? I don't know, Greg, where are you living money at?
By the way.
Okay, we have a motion, we have a second.
Oh, we are done, okay.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, number three, a resolution for the legislative plans, questionnaire for the fiscal year July 1st, 2014 through June 30th, 2015, I have a motion.
Motion accepted, yes.
Number second.
Second.
Jackie's second, all in favor? Okay.
Aye.
All right. Thank you. Now, before, the public jury to clean out the west side of the, what's the name of that street there?
Bailey.
Bailey, on Bailey Street, but it'll be on the west side of Methodist Church. So the public juryman's already been notified on this, he said put it on the agenda, they'll take care of that from the church.
They're gonna clean it out from, from the record church all the way there?
All the way down, all the way down. All the way down.
Well, that's why, uh, fong, good. Well, if they cleaned it out, it's gonna be a little bigger, you know? They don't got that, but that'd be good.
I have a motion for this.
Motion second.
Second, Mr. Commander, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, now, number five is, we'll turn this over to the public participation, now, it's your first, yes.
David, Wednesday at two o'clock is our grandparents' day program at the school. It's gonna be prepaid through second grade's gonna put on the program, Wednesday at two o'clock, I'm sorry.
I got a question before we, we go into that. I read in the business where we had this, uh, brothers' court guy, they're bent on, up for B, and I thought we had it settled.
We didn't, we didn't have any beat ups come in.
Did we ask somebody to?
Mr. Carmen notified me that when it got wet, it was coming fall or winter, he would come back to do that. But he's on higher ground like that, he's waiting to make a whole lot of timber and cleaning, cleaning up places like that.
Oh, you know, that's.
Manager, I tell you that we did.
That's where we already got somebody to clean that thing.
Yes.
Just wait till we get the change.
I know, I saw the men where y'all had had the bid.
We did.
We did, we worked on it.
And Mr. Carmen, no one wanted to know about it, but he did talk, wait to get winter, weather, we lived in there.
It doesn't need dry for a no-weather, it got to be dry.
I just did what he told me, I thought I could do it.
David, I've had a couple people come to me, probably because I said the location with the, up at our community center. Have they got the air conditioner fixed yet, of this whole popping?
Well, I told Mr. Fair Walker, what we're gonna do is, we're in a process right now, we've got a grant, on land security, they're playing a mirror, so I've done a proof and everything, I've done contact with the man in Dequincy, I have his name in the office. Where that shed's at down there on the west side of Community Center, we're gonna come out with existing fence to the yard, straight to the south. The shed's already been moved backwards, we'll put two double gates, a little cross over to the community center. So they'll have two gates, come in from the north side and go out south side. It was two thousand one hundred and few dollars, and we're, we're waiting right now, we'll have to meet with them, they'll be in two weeks, kind of this third, in Drutter, the money's been approved, we're just waiting on a check to come in right now. It'll be no cost to the town.
So it's shooting the result, you put this stuff?
Yes, sir.
Okay, cause that's what shape of what, like, we get to those surprises, what is surprise?
One twenty per day, and then twenty, if they go a day before or a day after, it's twenty dollars. So you got two days, it's a hundred forty dollars, and they get fifty dollars back.
So you talk about the air conditioner and not the fence that's going on?
And, and, well, what, what, now, getting back to the fence, we'll put in window units over there. Instead of doing away with the big unit we got.
But the big unit was cool, what happened?
There's no insulation in that building, and when you, I don't know when, when they had that deal over, for.
The last B A you got, it better, still, we had dirt, it was real nice and cool, but.
That's in November now.
Yeah, that probably part of the issue.
The air conditioner ran, he said it doesn't wrong with it, dude, in fact, it was too small for the hundred percent of the bickering weather that was being had.
That's correct, and, you know, weather's not too hot, I want to wait the next year and put in a window unit, and then it'd be fenced in, hopefully, they don't spill it, so they'll all be under fence and locked.
Now, the unit that's in there is fairly new already, right?
Well, I.
There, there was nothing wrong with the unit itself, it's just it could not keep up.
Hopefully, we find a use of utilizing somewhere else.
Well, we're gonna keep it, and, and turn it, we'll get another bigger unit, window unit, put in there, and, or area you put in.
Along with conjunction with it.
Along with conjunction of the central unit that's always there, that should help out a lot.
I got you, I got you.
And I think if a whole lot cheaper to do that, it wouldn't be, go, go by a whole another big central unit.
And I think a lot of people would like to utilize them, which is a good thing, but, you know, it's a comfort sometimes, okay, you got it. And I had a look, it's already.
Anyone else might say anything?
I would like to say something, I thank them, our policemen and all of them are doing good jobs. And I thought about on the Blue Night, I don't know if y'all noticed, I put me on a light for y'all, and I had to use the ones that Elizabeth, the other day, there were cops over there, and I told them, boy, I know that I'm trying to help them, but I'm, I appreciate you what they done, but they do do good work, and also Fred, I was out and about, I'm an early riser, and I was up about, way before seven, and Fred was down there just working at, now, Todd Bieber, somewhere on that thing, he was down there just working, and I thought that was so good, it was early. I didn't know if I even seen it, but that, but I guess he had light in there.
I thank all of our town workers, too, that they helped, what they did to work with, and our place for it. So anytime you see these men, just tell them thank you, for what you do, you know?
That helps you feel in time.
I mean, as the chief, of course, you know, a lot of people come to and need information, and I, in the first place, they go to the police station, and they go in, it's locked up, we don't have nobody, somebody to stay there for a while, be in there.
We have four officers, we can't stay inside the office all day long, maybe somebody come in, maybe somebody won't. We cannot patrol, we cannot issue citations, anything like that unless we're on the road. That's the reason we have a cell phone, that we carry it with us at all times.
So that can be reached at all times.
And, and the numbers on that sign, I've got, yeah, yeah, they can call.
Yeah.
Yes, yes.
I see y'all got a new Durango.
Well, the city and the river donated to us, so far, all we've got gonna be tied into it. It's gonna be about five hundred hours, getting the stickers and all put on it. Well, I went to the sheriff's department this morning, they said that we can come up there, take anything we need, to fix the Durango up, where it can be safely, officers writing, there's no cages whatsoever in it, and.
Can you take the cage from another one?
That's, that's what we're doing, the sheriff's department donated, and everything that was on this gray car, we have got on that Durango, so we're out, no money on that whatsoever, and, there was something else I was gonna say, too. Oh, we're gonna have to have an air conditioner fixed, we don't know if it's low on freon or what, but we gotta put a thousand dollars into a unit that we can use, that's a whole lot, even fifty or sixty thousand dollars.
So where's it at now?
Huh?
Where's it at now?
It's gonna, Paul's got it up there, he's gonna take it to the graphics place tomorrow, he's gonna have to measure, put the decals and all that stuff on it, and he's gonna have to tell you how the radio put in, other than everything else is already in it, the lights and all, we're gonna have on our own, so we're out, no money whatsoever on that.
That's good.
And they've also donated us another frame fix, if we get it, when we get it, the old white ghost is gone. It's about to fall apart, yeah, and they give us a Dodge truck cab, truck cab four-wheel drive pickup, which we use only for bad weather, stuff like that, or if a dog catcher needs it to go pick up a dog. That's be the only way to be used, and we stay at my house, and will not be used at all unless I see fit that it need be put on the road.
Oh, as a dog catcher, before picking up a dog, you kids on? David, I had one other question that was asked me just yesterday, and I don't know if it's the housing's responsibility, or if we could do something better than that, but if you're going in this housing area right up here, and, and Turner, the office up road right there, or whatever it is, they got some kids there. Most people, when they go in that road, they gotta go all the way down, circle around to come back out of it, and there's several of them that's, it's speeding up thirty miles an hour somewhere in that neighborhood, ain't got no speed gun to put on them, but they've got kids in there, things that's, or any way we could put a speed bump in there, or is that, is that their part?
Now, where's that at, is that right about Patton Street? Right up from the office. Oh, yeah, yeah, there's, there's nothing there, they shouldn't be going that fast in there, no.
Oh, on the other road, they do have a couple, yeah, there's one, and nothing right there. So I have my grandkids up there, too, to turn out the ones that from.
Last other road's above there, Mr. Speed bump, you're talking about?
Yeah, if you drove one down instead of turning around into the office, you drove one down and circle it around.
That's.
The last road down there, it's got a couple speed bumps.
That's Patton Street.
They may not have asphalt.
Is Patton Street's the last one?
Yes, ma'am.
Yeah.
Herd.
Herd, oh, okay.
A section.
No, part of our citizens are, you know, by the age of, you get there, so, and they ain't got no bed of paint on the street, doesn't make like got no bed going down the road for five thirty miles an hour.
You don't have a hundred fifty yards to go down, you don't know how to get thirty miles an hour.
Blame me to do it.
Yes, I know.
Blame me to do it, yeah.
They had, they.
They may have their turn to start straight, hey, I'm going off.
Yeah, they had been stopped.
They do it on, on our street, too. A lot of times, they don't have a place to stop, I don't even.
No, I.
One time, I almost had somebody.
Coming out, they lost out, I, I've stopped them twice.
Yeah.
But we can't be everywhere.
No, I understand, I'm not, I'm not.
No, I understand, you have a rear coming from the hood.
No, somehow, I meant that we could utilize them, to slow them down.
I think it would be cheaper in the long room, put up, people, don't replace anybody's tire.
We didn't know it was there, y'all, that, that's, y'all can come take the set off of Viper, I didn't know it was there. I was just thinking that, gotta help that's lifted.
Is there anything we do about that, or? Yes, sir.
I'd just like to say that we just moved from Maryville, and I talked to you there, and everybody has been one of the nice and treated us good, the police department was treated us good, y'all, workers, y'all got fantastic little town, and I want to thank you all as a council, good night, I've been there.
Well, we seen the city, city system today and everything, and your wife and those people, man, I know y'all glad to get out of High Off Castle area.
Right, I got two grand, get forty miles of land. That thousand mile move is nothing when it comes to them, so thank y'all very much.
And there way we happy, that's why I got this call.
Oh, I want to add something, have y'all had any burnt ends or anything around lately?
That's mine, we have.
Well, recently, I said that, you know, I have a deep freeze on the porch now, or the refrigerator, since my house got hit, my life, and it's as far as it got. But it, yeah, I'm in there, redoing a lot in there, and I found my deep freeze open, the lights two mornings, I looked down there, standing straight open. And I don't know, but it does have stuff in it, but I think about locking it out there.
Do you have a lock? Do you have a lock part?
Yeah.
That would be your safe, it's the best bet to keep it locked, of lock.
Yeah, I've got a lock, I was going.
Cause more of your house, any of the shrub and stuff? You can't see your house from the road, yeah, you have to go inside and turn around, and basically, if you pull in, they go over the height.
Yeah.
So best, be on your best interest to keep it locked, huh?
I got mine this side, come up top of, and that's your.
Well, I thought I had twenty times, it's next to the next, I tapped that there, so I know it wasn't.
That's, that's interesting, like.
Well, I was just curious, I thought maybe.
I got my little girls and.
I'll, yeah, it won't be no problem.
Because of the last person that tapped.
Better be safe, so.
That twenty.
Never met, now you're saying again. So we're telling them something, God knew.
Yeah, and I'll wait and tap.
David, another place we're pretty close, at the temple, we're gonna be thinking about Christmas tree, and angels, for stuff like that.
No further, some ask, uh?
Yeah, right.
Oh, go ahead, that's hard.
Well, is this that public time you talked about?
Public time.
I, I do know before, he and I had been knocking around an idea about something in the community, but.
in the community, but anytime that you have your workers, I just want to say, as a therapist, spraying and poisoning and things, if you could make them wear masks, cause I treat a lot of people that did that for years, and they have all kind of physical neurological problems, those things that are on the side of that pesticide, it happens, it just takes a long time to happen, about the time you're ready to retire, so I'm gonna say that part about that, what is it called, PPE material? Protective?
Yeah.
PPE material, it's very important. But, uh, Coach and I were talking about, uh, like I'm working with him now, and I said my goal in home health was for him to get back to the community and drive around and go to the farm, uh, besides dressing and, uh, making sure he doesn't run out of energy, uh, hobbling around, but he's done fabulous. Uh, but we were talking about that it would be a really good idea, and we even gave it a little name, if some of the community things that y'all go to, if we had some kind of way, and, and I would definitely volunteer my time, but to have a little exercise time, just things that would keep people from falling and places. There's so many that I've seen over the years, but, um, so we call it the Stompers, you know, just some kind of little group, if there be any kind of way that somebody would catch on to that idea, I don't know how that could work. I wanted it to be at the nursing home so that everybody could get used to hanging out with our friends, and, but, uh, any place would be good, that was cool, huh? The air conditioning. But it's just an idea, if anybody ever wanted to grab a hold to it, I would love to get involved as one of those outside Maryville gangs.
Good suggestion, very good.
The Stompers, just...
I might say if y'all got extra, maybe you go by the nursing home and just visit something. I have been through them for years and visit just the people that I know, you know, I went to see. But when my sister was in there, it kinda hit me, cause we're real close, she, what I used to, lady, just touched me that so many of those little people in there, I don't think anybody ever goes to see them, they just break my heart and my pocketbook because I can't stand them. If I take somebody something and these little things come up to me, you want to give them something too, just, but just stop by and say hello to them or something, cause they're so lonesome in there.
The church goes over every Tuesday?
Every Tuesday. I think too, the nursing home, if somebody lets them know ahead of time, the elderly can buy a meal there, so they can walk over or drive over and eat with, and visit them. So, I mean, that is even a possibility if anybody gets to speak of it.
I think it's a good, we share just a minute with them every once in a while. I know Shirley Cooley sits in there by herself, so...
Yes, she does, for years and years.
For years, but I never thought about the other people so much, but it really, it's just a good thing to do. Makes you feel better all over.
There are a lot of, there are a lot of community people that do slip by there. When I used to work there, it was encouraging to see, they were just coming in and visiting, I think Mr. Carroll was one of them, but he might be on the board, maybe?
Larry Carroll still is on the board.
Larry Carroll, mhm.
I need to get in the prison booth, but it, it just, I really realized that some of them are broke from way off, you know, they bring them in and they just forget their day.
Yes, ma'am.
They don't come back to see them or anything, and it's sad.
But the churches do, a lot of the different churches come through there, and that's always good.
I pray, one time Marisha and I were walking down the hall, and the two little, I don't know if you remember, David, the two little twin sisters that were living in the nursing numbers along many years ago, well, they were sitting at the piano, cause they had this little time where they had, and they were playing, one was playing the piano, the other was singing, and they got in an argument there, and it was so funny, because she said, you're playing too fast, she said, no, you're not, you're singing too slow. And it was just comical to watch each other, I told her, I said, there goes a new you in another few years. It just got comical. I'm sorry, I got, we all...
No further. Will, uh, everybody vote for, uh, Sherman? What you like, that guy? No further. Thank y'all coming out.